That's like my favorite part. All right, is this all of us? Lucy's online. Well, hello, everybody and welcome. We'll go ahead and call a meeting to order. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Here.
Clegg.
Here.
Halliburton.
Here.
Willetts.
Here.
Widdings.
Here.
All present.
So we've got a couple of items today. First off, we have the cruising ordinance with Hannah Brass Greer. Welcome Hannah and Captain Ruffalo. Great to see you back in the chambers. And hi Chief. I can hear you, but the mic's not on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Hannah Brass Greer from the mayor's office back before you today to give you an update and offer some recommendations to address some of the issues we discussed a few months ago related to cruising. Um, just as a reminder, um, I'm going to refer to the crews, talk about cruising. Want to make sure we're on the same page, what we're talking about. The crews, as we're talking about downtown in the downtown corridor, really runs spring through fall. You'll see folks down there in the winter as well. It's usually doing laps Maine and Idaho between fifth and 14th-ish. But there's a peak between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And over the last six months to a year, businesses and members of the public have raised concerns about some of the behaviors associated with the crews. The noise, trash, some chaos in the area. And some businesses have even felt forced to change their schedules because of the impact of some of these behaviors on their staff and customers. And a lot of the recommendations that I'm bringing you today focus on the noise and the modified exhaust systems that are causing some of these issues. Specifically, the revving of the engines and then also that gun gunfire sound that happens that does cause some panic for folks downtown. I am talking specifically here about downtown because that's where sort of our biggest issues are. But these recommendations apply broadly. They are not bound by any geographic area in the city and it's focused on some of these behaviors. So when I was before you a few months ago, you all provided some feedback and I just wanted to go over some of that again to share that with the public and also make sure that you know, we took that into account when making these recommendations. So you all recognize that the cruise has become somewhat of a Boise tradition. But you are concerned about the impact that it has on the downtown area. And that impact has caused some health and safety issues that we wanted to address through some changes to the ordinance. But you were clear that you wanted to both enforce the current laws that we have on the books and also focus on the behavior. So we aren't not coming here before you. We didn't discuss last time prohibiting cruising. That's not on the table. We're talking about some specific behaviors. And you wanted to ensure that police had the tools necessary to enforce and ensure that the penalties were substantial enough that it would curb some of this bad behavior. So current city code is really set up so that we can enforce through measuring decibel levels. And the way that was designed was really for exhaust systems that are modified or in disrepair and are sort of creating these constant sounds that are longer than more than a couple of seconds. Not really designed to address the concerns and the behavior we're talking about where these short bursts of sounds that are intentional. They usually last a couple of seconds at most. So when I was here before you, we did talk about looking into new technologies that we could acquire for BPD handheld technologies that could measure those decibel levels. But looking into it further, decided that that wasn't really going to address any of the issues. We already had the decibel levels in code. We weren't able to, with current or new technologies, be able to measure quick enough. Again, those those sounds last for a couple of seconds. So that wasn't the way that we decided to go here. Um, so the, I'll go over some of the changes, but generally they're all focused on those intentional sounds, including the revving of engines and the gunfire sounds. So the first section that's changed is Title VI, Chapter 16, and really just a general section to say the operating a motor vehicle in a right of way in a manner that creates an unreasonable noise. Again, the examples I'll keep going to are the really loud revving of engines and that gunfire sound that's audible from more than 50 feet away. That will be an infraction. And then in the next section, that's where we have more of the substantive changes. So in in Chapter 17, we've removed all of the references to measuring decibel levels for all the reasons I have explained. It's just impossible to measure. The only way we could do that is if we change the downtown infrastructure to constantly and passively measure sound. And we'd likely need to have cameras involved too, to be able to attach that to the vehicle. And that's not something that it seems like anyone was interested in doing. There's also likely some other legal issues with state law there. So what we have, what we have done is made it a little more general. Again, no unreasonable sounds that can be heard from more than 50 feet away. And it does talk about modified mufflers. So if someone, for example, does have a vehicle, factory vehicle that wasn't modified, that was loud and we cited them, that would be a defense for them if they went to court. That this was their factory vehicle and they didn't do anything to modify it. The other change in this section, we keep the first violation as an infraction. And I'll, I'll talk about in just a minute, changing the fine amount. But in this section, we changed a second violation within a year to a misdemeanor based on the feedback that you all provided. And then the last section that is the recommendation to change is related to overall infractions across city code. So currently, an infraction in city code is punishable by up to $100 fine, but state code allows us to go up to $300. So this proposed change would bring that ceiling up to $300. It doesn't actually change any specific infraction fines yet. It just allows us to go up to 300. And then a resolution, assuming you all approve these code changes, a resolution would accompany the code changes on third reading to say these specific infractions would go up to $300. But all of the other infractions would remain unchanged. Um, so with that, I will leave those recommendations for you. I'm happy to answer any questions. I am going to turn it over to Captain Ruffalo to just go over some plans for enforcement and communications to the community. And then I can jump back up if you've got questions.
I'm Madam Mayor, City Council Members. Thank you for having me. My name is Captain Mike Ruffalo. I'm the captain of the Community Outreach Division for the Boise Police Department. After speaking with my people, some recommendations that we have regarding how to enforce the, specifically the downtown core and the complaints that we have received. As stated, it goes basically from Memorial Day to Labor Day, which is also considered the 100 deadliest days of summer by the Office of Highway Safety. Be concentrating on Thursdays, Fridays and Saturdays, which we have seen the most traffic down there. What we would do is we would start on the inbound connector as people are coming down. We do see a lot of speeders and other speeding vehicles and other infractions that we would enforce. And then specifically to the downtown core, we'd have our motorcycle officers would be part of it. Our DUI traffic officers would be a part of it. And we also would bring in our partner agencies to assist in a saturation type patrol when necessary. And then we would, some things that we would be enforcing besides what was just the recommendation for the ordinance change excessive speeds, racing and reckless driving, and aggressive driving. And then also the kind of a big one that we see quite a bit is the failing to yield to pedestrian and bicyclists, which is a big, a big issue, as you can imagine, for people that are out enjoying downtown. And how we would do this is we would have a communication with the public. We'd use our public information officer to put out word that we're going to be down there. We're going to be enforcing what we're going to be enforcing, the relevant statutes that people can be aware of. And that's it for all I have for that. And any questions?
Madam Mayor. I have a question. So I think we've got the ticketed offense. So somebody makes a loud noise. We figure out that we can prove that it's them and we're writing them a ticket for that loud noise. Is it legal to actually have the modifications on their car in the first place?
The modified muffler?
Yeah.
No, not anything that's modified from the manufacturer. No.
And so I guess that's my question is that we're giving them a ticket for the noise. But are we also giving any sort of tickets for having that technology on their car? Or is that something that we have the capacity to do?
Um, and my apologies, Council Pro Tem Halliburton. That would be the discretion of the officer. They'd be two separate. There's the state code for the modified muffler. And then this would be a city ordinance. So that would be the officer discretion.
Yeah, and Madam Mayor just thought there. So it sounds like there's potentially two infractions that they would have there. One would be the excessive noise or the noise from the city, but then also having illegal modifications on their car as a state law.
Council member, Council Pro Tem Halliburton, that would be correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So thanks for being here. Really excited to see these changes. Couple of questions. You didn't address rolling coal. How will, when they, you know, make smoke, make diesel smoke in front of everybody? How are you going to address that?
Council member, Clegg, you're talking about when they spin their tires?
Yeah.
That would actually be under negligent.
It's actually not tires. Yeah, it's, it's a diesel thing. I don't know exactly how they do it.
Madam Mayor and Council Member, that is also in here. I didn't, I didn't bring it in, but it's excessive noise and then the excessive smoke and exhaust is also covered.
I, I thought I saw it in, in the ordinance when I read it, but you didn't say anything.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. And then my last question, have we thought about not shutting off the cruise, but, but really reducing the speed limit? Especially from ninth to Capitol on both Maine and Idaho during certain hours. So 10 miles an hour or something. I know they don't go very fast anyway, because they're in traffic mostly, but they like to go as fast as they can for as short a distance as they can. Would something like that be useful?
Yeah, Madam, Madam Mayor and Council Member, at the, at the last work session, we talked about this. I think it was Council Member Halliburton. You asked if there was a way we could design the streets and other, other actions we could take that weren't necessarily ordinance related to sort of decrease that activity. And we have discussed that internally. And I know Bree on my team has, has this on our list of things also to discuss with ACHG as ways we could partner together to sort of create a better design to, to reduce this activity.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that that's still on the, on the palette. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, um, thank you both so much for your work on this. We, as you said, Hannah, we've been hearing from businesses, especially over the past year, about just how disruptive some of this stuff is, especially as it comes into patio season and people are out and about. And I think too, with the increase in residential uses downtown, it is creating a little bit more conflict. My question is around training of officers prior to, you know, with all of these changes in mind and going into a little bit of enhanced enforcement. Can you kind of describe to me how officers know that, that people are out of line with the ordinance and how they're kind of enforcing that?
Oh yes, Council President Widdings. Great question. We, we would do, if the ordinance was to, to change, we would do our, our internal ILEARNs type training where they would have to go in, review it. Be able to ask questions to their supervisors during trainings if they had anything like that. But the officers, every officer would be trained on any ordinance change.
And Madam Mayor, follow up. How about on the, because I've done a ride along downtown at night and it's just, I mean, very chaotic. It's really hard to figure out where noises are coming from, you know, which vehicle is it? How are you going to get to that vehicle if you figure it out? What is, you know, what, what does that training look like just on identification of vehicles? How you actually like get that person to pull over once you've identified who they are?
Council President Widdings, if I understand correctly, once, once we identified a vehicle that violated whichever statute, how do we stop them? Is that?
Madam Mayor, I guess more, how, how did they identify the vehicle that is making, you know, excess noise or whatever in that kind of chaotic environment? Is there special training or anything like that? Or is it just kind of like officer discretion?
Well, they would have, Council President Widdings, they would, I, they would have to identify which vehicle was. So that could be they're in line with the vehicle and, you know, they, the vehicle's next to them or there's officers. The way that we would do, we would have, we would have officers staged in, down the roads in certain areas. So maybe the first officer that heard it might not be able to identify which vehicle, but another officer down the street could do it. But they would have to be able to identify which vehicle was in order to have that traffic stop.
Great, thank you. So everyone's kind of working together in concert, communicating and making sure that, that everyone's kind of teaming up to, to do the enforcement actions.
Council President Widdings, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I have one question. I think it's for Hannah, but I'm not sure. So the factory exhaust is a defense to something. Is it a defense to making too much noise? Or that, I just got confused like, because you can make too much noise probably with a fact. I don't know. Yeah. What's it defense to?
Yeah, um, Madam Mayor and Council Member, I, it does depend. So there, there are prohibitions to modifying and making those gunfire sounds and also revving of your engine. So if you are making an unreasonable sound and your car isn't modified, but there's something you are intentionally doing, I believe you can still be cited. But, but specific to the modification rules, if you are cited and they establish that it was you that made this noise and you said, I was, you know, you would, this would be in court essentially. I was simply driving my car. I don't have modifications. I can prove that. That could be used as a defense in that scenario.
Got it. That makes sense. Well, you know, my feedback, last time we talked about this was it shouldn't be illegal to drive your car in a circle. And it should be illegal to drive your car in a circle like a jerk. And that's what we've done here. So I really appreciate that my feedback was listened to, but also that, that this addresses the problem behaviors. Cause it's not the cruise that's the problem. It's the type of cruising that is the problem. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, maybe just one more comment. I think Council Member Beijing, I don't know if you did that because the press was here, but that was a great soundbite that you just gave. So.
The press is always here, Jimmy.
Looking forward to, I'm reading about that one. The cruise doesn't, but you're right. The cruise doesn't have to be a bad thing. And it could be a really cool thing as well, if it's done properly, if people aren't breaking the law, if it's done safely. And if it prioritizes the safety of the most vulnerable users on the road. And like Council Member Clegg, that's something that I really would love to see going forward. There's a certain time at night when Boise has so many pedestrians walking around from different businesses, different clubs, different restaurants, you know, you name it. And the pedestrian activity is, is overwhelming, but there's no real change in how the streets are used during that specific period of time. And that's something I think that we really have to address as the city, possibly through our Vision Zero efforts. It's like looking at crosswalk times, looking at what it would actually take to prioritize the safety of people walking around. And so I think that this is a really great start. I'm excited to see the, the impact that it can have and hopefully encourage people to do the cruise in a way that's fun and safe. But also some ways that we as a city can keep moving forward to actually prioritize the types of use that we want to see during those peak times for our businesses.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. I have a question and it could either be for the captain or for Hannah. So I really like where we've come on this ordinance. One of the things that I want to point out is that this isn't just a downtown centric thing. If there's noises in other parts of the town, of the city, we wouldn't tolerate that either. And I know that there are places where folks actually, they don't, they don't do the, the traditional cruise, but they do drive. And, and it can be overwhelming in terms of the noise. I know that the police can be everywhere at all times, but walk me through what someone would do if that becomes a stretch that now becomes more amiable to something like this. Like what, what sort of defense mechanisms do we have in place?
Council Member Willis, I, I apologize. My, my hearing's kind of going. I didn't quite catch the question.
The question was, um, what, so there, this is, you know, the cruise is downtown, but this behavior occurs in other places too. So, um, what do the police plan or what do residents have the opportunity? Like, how can residents seek help, get relief if something similar is happening in their neighborhood?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Mayor Willis, great question. And, you know, it, this, we're, we're talking about, like you said, we're talking about the downtown core. But obviously this, this is something that we could do anywhere in the city. So if there are identified problems that, you know, people call in to complain saying, you know, they're woken up at night or anytime during the day because of type of behavior that we are discussing. We can absolutely send the same type of concept out there to, to do that. Does that answer your question then?
Yeah, thank you so much. I think it's just important to note that, uh, obviously there's a concentration of this downtown, but I've heard complaints from Hill Road. I've heard complaints in other areas where folks take to joy riding in a way that is disruptive to a neighborhood. So I just want to make sure that while we know that this is concentrated, particularly at certain times of the year and in certain, you know, days, that this could be an area that, that seeps into others that we need to be able to be able to address that isn't just in the downtown corridor.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything further? All right. Thank you both very much. We'll go ahead now and pick up the presentation on the percent for cultural assets ordinance by Jennifer Stevens from Arts and History. And it looks like we've got Tilly, Bob and Olagio, right? I don't know your last name though. Sorry. Loreno, great. We've got two other team members with us tonight too.
Yeah, moral support. All right. So good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Thank you so much for taking the time tonight to hear about this. I'm here to present to something that I've been working on for the last few months with my team, with Tilly especially. It is an update or a recommended update to the percent for art ordinance. And so I'm just here to more or less let you know where we are at with, where we are at with that. What we're trying to do in terms of what we're trying to change, the opportunities we're trying to take hold of. And then also to just get, affirm the direction from you and make sure that we're on the right page here. So I'll start just by giving you a little bit of a timeline of when the ordinance was passed as it relates to public, the public art program in the city of Boise and where we are today with the Arts and History Department. So we began in 1978 with an arts commission and that actually existed until 2008. There's a typo there. Sorry about that. And really that was just a volunteer organization, right, that, that worked to implement art projects throughout the city. And then in 2001, we had the passage of the percent for art ordinance that was passed by city council. And what that essentially did was provide 1% of all capital projects, eligible capital projects to go toward public art programs. And we're going to be talking a lot about that today. In 2004, so three years later, the Office of the City Historian was created and that existed until 2008. And it was of course, in that year that the department was created by ordinance. And you now oversee the Department of Arts and History, which kind of wrapped all of those things together into an actual department. Again, created by ordinance. So if you fast forward to 2023, that department has grown pretty dramatically since then. Council has blessed many parts of the work that we do there. We have several service lines. We have administration. We have a city archives. We do cultural planning. We have two cultural sites that we oversee. We have a grant program of $150,000, which has grown since its beginning. We of course have a history program. We have public art and then we have a care and conservation program to take care of that public art. And in addition, I think this is a really important part, we have 16 FTEs. So it's a, it's a fully staffed department that has, you know, a much broader goal and a much broader mission than just doing a public art program. And that's more or less why I'm here tonight. The existing percent for art ordinance as it stands today is really directed only at the public art portion of our program. And I've gotten, got a couple of quotes up here on the screen that are specific, specifically from the ordinance. So you can read exactly what it says. So you can see here, it says that 1% of eligible capital expenditures be appropriated for the acquisition of public art. And then later in the ordinance, and I'm highlighting in green, some of the things I'm going to be talking about over the next few minutes. It says, "Associated project management, maintenance and education costs will be funded through the regular city budget process, not to exceed four tenths of a percent of the total cost of all eligible capital improvement projects." So that's what the ordinance says today. So one of the initiatives that I've embarked on since I got here six months ago yesterday, I'll have you know, was to revise this ordinance. And in part that was, I chose this as a strategic initiative because of the meetings that I had in my department. There were a variety of things that my staff was telling me in those first few weeks of my tenure here that pointed to this ordinance sort of needing an update. And that's essentially what we're doing today. So the ordinance has been in effect for 22 years, actually as of yesterday. So I share an anniversary with the percent for art ordinance in some ways. We were one of the very first cities in Idaho and, and Council Member Halliburton, you'll recognize that this slide has changed a little bit because it turns out we were not the very first to pass the percent for art ordinance. We were the second in the state. But we have definitely created since the passage of this ordinance in 2001, the most effective and the, and the biggest public art program in the state. We share public percent for art ordinances with Ketchum, Coeur d'Alene and Twin Falls. Our public art collection actually totals more than 1,000 works, one of which of course is Adorning the Dais Tonight. And then many of which you can see throughout the city, throughout city hall, throughout our libraries and many other places. And it's really a pretty magnificent collection that we've, that we've maintained and that we've grown over those years. But now that we're 22 years in, it's time for an update. And so we want to build on that success and bring the ordinance in line with what the department as a whole is trying to accomplish today. So the opportunities we have in front of us to update this ordinance are the following. Number one, we want to clarify that language. So as I showed on the screen a few minutes ago, the first 1% is pretty clear. The second 0.4% is a little less clear. It's again done through the budget process. And it's very unpredictable in, in the sense that it has not been done consistently for the last 22 years. It has not been done consistently across the three funds, the general fund and the two enterprise funds. And it has not been really clear how that, what that money is being used for. We also second, secondarily want to align the ordinance, as I mentioned, with the current department mission. So I put on the timeline, I put the timeline up for a reason, and that was so that you could see that the ordinance was created before the department was created. And so what I'm trying to do with this ordinance rewrite or revision is a better way of putting it, is to align those two things. Make sure that the ordinance actually reflects what the department is trying to do. I'm also hoping that we can broaden the definition of public art and what the dollars can be spent on. And then update basic things like procedural language. Right now the ordinance references the, the buy annual, so every two year budget process. And of course we do that on an annual basis now. So with that, what I've, what I've put on the slide in front of you here is two boxes. On the left, you'll see what the current ordinance has in, in it. And then on the right, I've laid out what I'm hoping to do with the ordinance and what we're, what we're aiming to sort of accomplish. So on the left, you can see that the 1% goes toward very basically public art. But the language that's in the ordinance really suggests only permanent public art. And the public art field has grown and really expanded quite dramatically over the time that the ordinance has been in effect. So for example, things like the traffic wraps, the traffic box wraps are really temporary art. They're not intended to be permanent. They're not, they're not necessarily assets in the collection that grow in value or anything along those lines. But even beyond that temporary public art, we've also, the field itself has expanded to include something called projection art, which is temporary art. You might've gone to Garden City on one of their evenings and seen projection art all over the city. Again, that kind of programming does not, is not really covered by the ordinance, the way it's written today. So we're hoping to sort of broaden that language and allow those sorts of things to be covered by the dollar. by the dollars that are generated through this ordinance. In addition to that, again, to align with what the, what the department is really aiming to do now, we're hoping that this, that the dollars in this ordinance can also be spent for additional things, including artifacts. If there's something in the River Street neighborhood, for instance, that we want to acquire and put in the Irma Hayman House as part of our exhibitions there and part of our programming there, we want this ordinance to be able to fund that sort of a purchase. In addition to that, we want to do something similar with our archives. If there's a particular collection that makes sense, manuscript collection or otherwise, for us to acquire to enhance our understanding of the history of the city of Boise, we want the dollars to go toward processing that sort of, of a collection. So what we're really hoping is to permit these dollars to be broad, more broadly spent, again, to bring that in line with what the department itself is doing now. I also want to point out under the, up to 0.4 on the left-hand side of this slide, as I mentioned, there has not been a very consistent method of collecting these dollars through the budget process. And so we're hoping to make it more consistent. But also the way the language reads right now, that up to 0.4%, excuse me, can be used for education, project management and planning. Well, those are things that with the mission of the department today, which is to, you know, have history exhibitions in libraries and other public spaces throughout the city, we'd like to be able to use these dollars for that sort of programming as well. So that's, in my mind, that falls under broadly education and we want to be able to use the dollars for that. So what we're proposing is to change the way that the, and I'll go ahead and move this to the next slide, is change the way we do the funding. So we're proposing that we would increase the flat calculation from 1% to 1.2%. And I'm going to go, now I'm going to switch back and go to the other slide. And what that would do is if we, if you look at the 1.2% over on the right-hand slide, that would allow us to take that uncertainty out of the annual budget request and allow us to use those funds again for the education, the project management and planning. What we would do then with the second, with the remaining 0.2%, so now it's from 0.4 on an annual basis to 0.2, is really focus only on maintenance in that 0.2, so that it's a predictable amount of money that we are working right now on a five-year maintenance plan to, to demonstrate, so that we know that on an annual basis, the assets that are managed by our department are being managed the same way every other kind of asset throughout the city is being managed. And we do that, you know, with other assets in the city through the budget process. So this is really just bringing in line that maintenance with the rest of the city assets. It's essentially what it's doing. And then allowing the 0.2 that goes toward education and programming and things to be part of the flat one point, you know, going from 1% to 1.2% instead. So I hope that I have articulated all of those changes in a way that makes sense. And with that, I'll go ahead and stand for any questions.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Great, go ahead.
Director Stevens, thanks for the presentation and thanks for your work. Six months anniversary. That's something to celebrate. I want to make sure that I understand from a clarity perspective, right now it's up to 1.4%. What you're looking at doing now is to change how that's calculated. So in other words, it's, it's 1.2 and then that other 0.2% is still there, but it's just a different way of, of allocating those dollars, so that the top line doesn't necessarily change. It's how it's distributed underneath that. Okay?
That's correct. Yes. Sorry, Councilwoman Willis, yes.
And so let me ask you another question. And if you don't have this off the top of your head, we can get it at another time. You mentioned that this, that there's been variability within those numbers. Last year, did the arts department get the, the full 1.4%? Or did it get more than that or less than that? What's the, what's the history of the different funding?
Yeah, that's a great question.
How variable is it, is my question?
Yes, Mayor and Councilwoman Willis. So that's a great question. And there's not a straight answer to that because it has changed, or I should say it varies from fund to fund. So currently, we are budgeted for $90,000 for our care and conservation in the general fund. What percentage of the total collection, like how that relates to the 0.4? I can't give you that number, but essentially what we've been doing in the general fund is to just go in, as I understand it anyway, and of course, I haven't been present in previous budget sessions. But as I understand it, it's been sort of a, I had to choose my words carefully, but a less, a less precise way of funding that I think I would like to see moving forward. So what we're doing now is we, like I said, we're working on generating a five-year maintenance plan so that we know every year, sort of, for instance, if there are certain things that have to get done every year. The bronze has to get patinaed and cleaned every year. But electrics don't have to happen every year, right? There are certain things that have electric circuits that, or new LED lights or whatever, that maybe only need to be replaced every five years. So we're working on that so that we can identify exactly how much money we need on an annual basis. And we are trying to take some of that unpredictability out. So as it relates to the 0.4%, I can't tell you percentage-wise exactly what that 90% or $90,000, how that calculates with regard to the percents. But I can say that it has not been done in a super precise way up till now, and it has not been done with that 0.4% in mind as a rule. And I will add one other thing, and that is from, what I was just explaining was the general fund. It's also been variable from the airport fund and the, and the Public Works Fund. So for example, in airport, we really don't even have a budget that we get from them. We more or less, if there is a problem with one of the pieces out at the airport, we go to the airport and then we do an indirect cost, you know, sort of assessment on them. And so we don't actually start there with a budget at all. So that actually points out a great variability, just in terms of how they calculate it or don't, because we don't really get a budget at the beginning of the year versus how the general fund does. So it's, you know, there's not a great answer and we can give you, I mean, I can do those calculations, Councilwoman Willis, if you want to see how that looks. We can definitely do that because we've got the data, but it's, it's messy.
And maybe, let me ask it a different way that might help clarify. If this change had been in the previous budget, would the number have gone up or down as to what the arts department had received? Or would it have been the same?
Right. That's a great question. We have not run those exact numbers yet. And we are working with the Budget Office to look at whether or not this is going to represent an increase or a decrease or be flat. We have certainly gone into this with the intention that it's going to be flat, that it's going to be revenue neutral and it's not going to change the way we, we do things. And in fact, well, I don't want to promise that the budget's going to go down because I don't know that it will. But I, I do think what it's going to do is allow us to look every year into the future and really have a good handle on what the costs are going to be. And that's sort of the goal, generally speaking. I, you know, the intent isn't to expand, necessarily expand the, the budget that we have to spend on anything. The intent is really to modernize this ordinance so that it's predictable and that it, again, is aligned with what the department is aiming to do as a whole.
Madam Mayor? Thank you. Thanks for being here, Jennifer. It's really great to have this conversation. Interesting, I was one of the advocates for the original ordinance. And so it's kind of a full circle moment, right? So my question is this. Given that the ordinance is based on capital budgets and as we know, because sometimes big capital projects come through, like at the airport or at solid waste, if we base the, I've always wondered this, if we base the 0.4% on the capital budget, some years it'll be really big and some years it will be really small. But much of the work that goes on within the 0.4% is more ongoing work that's stable from year to year. So I think I understand what you're trying to do with this. The 0.2% creates at least a stable understanding of what, what should come to Arts and History. But there's still that uncertainty based on the size of the capital projects. So have you thought about trying to, to smooth that out, if you will? And then the second part of my question is, does it make sense to separate, if you will, especially, I mean, you've begun to do that, separate the maintenance and operations budget from the percent ordinance and base it on the maintenance and operations needs, much like we do everything else?
Mayor, Councilwoman Clegg, thank you for the question. Okay, so I'll answer the 402 versus 101 first. So you'll actually see in the budget hearings that are coming down the road. And I am afraid you won't be here anymore for that, unfortunately. But we are actually trying to solve some of those problems. And one of the requests that we're going to be making is to move some of the 402 things that we've used 402 funds for into the 101 fund for exactly that reason. There are, there are things that have been, we've been using $402 for that don't make sense to be there, right? So things like the bronze cleanings and things like that, that are just basic maintenance. So that's one of the ways that we're planning to smooth that out. The ordinance, as we've, as we've started to draft it, also includes rebudgeting. So we will make sure that we have that opportunity every single year to roll those dollars over into the next fiscal year if they haven't been used. So between those two things, we're hoping to solve that, that sort of variability in the, in the, that 0.2, what will become a 0.2.
Madam Mayor, if I could follow up, thank you. That, that's, yeah, I think that makes a lot of difference. The other question, is it necessary or wise to also amend the ordinance to more clearly define or more broadly define what a capital project is? I know over the years I've been here, sometimes things are capitalized and sometimes they're not within various department budgets based, I think, more on who's doing the budgeting in that case than on whether we have a clearly defined idea of whether it's a capital project or not. Have you thought about that?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Clegg, we've, we've sort of tackled that. So one of the things that we have done is to put into the, into the ordinance that, again, we're in the middle of drafting, the, the fact, and I think this gets at your question, that we would, if there are, for instance, capital projects in the middle of a year, that this would be part of the process that would, that the same calculation would go into a capital project in the middle of the year as goes into the sort of main budgeting process that happens once a year. So I, does that get at your question? I mean, that is something that we are concerned about.
Another piece of that, an example I can think of from the past is that when we buy a new software, it used to be pretty clear that it was a capital expenditure because it was a product that we bought and we used. Now that there are subscription products, I think there's been some, I don't know, is it, is it not a capital project? But for instance, a lot of the digital art that we acquired about a decade ago came from the new ERP system purchase. So is that a capital project or is it not? Do we need to define that?
Yeah, that's a great question, Councilwoman Clegg and Madam Mayor, that we have not actually tackled yet. And I think that's, that's great guidance for us as we move forward. Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Okay, two things, well, three things. First, on the capital, my suggestion on the capital expenditure would be, follow whatever the generally accepted rules of accounting are. It's a word with a meaning that, nice and clear, even in ambiguous situations, accountants and lawyers are going to argue over it, but like, let them do that work. If it turns out to be the wrong metric, then include something other than capital projects to get where we need. That's my humble suggestion, rather than doing the lift for the entire United States as it sorts out how to account for technology. I think I understand why 1.2 plus additional expenses versus 1%, really only for acquisition. That makes sense. But my big question is very similar to the one that Councilmember Clegg asked. It's, and I'm a RUB, I don't actually understand, but it seems to me that the cost of maintenance, maintaining an archive or maintaining assets is the cost of maintenance. That cost is not 0.2% of our capital budget. It's the cost of maintenance. And so the council member's point was certainly correct. Some years it's going to be more and some years it's going to be less. And carrying it forward into the next year is one way to smooth that. But it, have you thought about whether the answer to that last point two is just, we have a set of costs that we need the council to fund? It's not tied to whatever's being invested in in the city. This is just our cost. And I just wonder if that's something you've thought about and whether you've rejected it for a reason that you understand and I don't.
No, I don't know that we've actually thought about it in exactly that way, Council, Councilmember Bajant. I think that it's a very good point. And I think that the budget team has sort of directed us that direction. And I think,
Wait, I'm sorry. Has the budget team directed you in the direction that you proposed or the direction that the council member just suggested?
Madam Mayor, the, the budget team has, has recognized and advised us that, you know, that the city's going to take care of its assets, kind of hard stop, right? And so sort of along the lines of what you just said, don't worry, they haven't said in so many words to say, like, don't worry about the 0.2 or whatever the calculation is. But they've more or less said what you just said, which is, you know, we are going to fund and council will fund whatever needs to be funded to take care of these assets. So certainly that's something we can go back, go back and sort of revise and look at. And I think it goes back to Councilwoman Willis's comment, which is, you know, where is, where is this in terms of the 0.4%? Is, you know, is the $90,000, is that representative of anything in particular? And if really that hasn't been calculated in any particular way, it might make sense to just remove that calculation. I think that's a good, good question.
I mean, I don't know. You've thought about it much more than me, certainly. And I'm not, I'm not saying like, hey, go do it this way. But it seems like the connection between maintenance and capital improvement projects is completely arbitrary, except that tying it to the capital improvement projects kind of ensures that the money is there. Like, that's the whole function. But if you, if you're just using the last 0.2% for maintenance, then it's even more arbitrary. And I know, like, discount, like, the advice from the Budget Office is certainly correct. Like, we're not going to let the bronze patina away or the light bulbs die. And so maybe, you know, I'm not saying do it this way, but that, that's the feedback that I have. Then maybe it's just, just ask us for the money and not tie it to this formula that doesn't totally fit.
Thank you.
Well, and I just say, Councilmember, that this is a work session, so those suggestions make sense. You know, what, my sense of what the Budget Office hoped to see, what we hope to see is have a more regular, predictable and accountable way of budgeting for this department. And yes, we will always take care of assets, or so we think. However, when this ordinance was developed, it was developed with that insurance, if you will, that there would be money set aside for maintenance and operations of the department. And it has gone up and down because sometimes it's been taken, sometimes it hasn't been. But it hasn't been budgeted as other departments budget, which is pushing it into the next year if it wasn't needed in the existing year. And so it's that kind of, I'm going to say, professionalization of the budgeting system within the department. So it aligns with our other departments. And that was one of the requests that we had for them. And the desire to ensure that there's a funding source to cover that MNO as needed in good years and bad years, which is why we've asked the department to budget in similar ways to other departments. But yes, the, I mean, I have no doubt that this council would look at the assets that we have and hold and say, we need to come up with MNO for them, just as we would a park or any other location in the city. And then the other thing, you know, so I, so my sense is kind of going back and working on this more. There's, there's an openness to being a little bit more fluid, if it makes sense. But I, one of the, the discussion points I think the council ought to have is, in the long run, is it better? But I, one of the, the discussion points I think the council ought to have is, in the long run, is it better to kind of stick with a formula that then gets passed on year by year if it's not used? Or do we want to just put it into and expect that MNO would just be covered? Like every other department has it covered on a regular basis in the budget discussions. But then I want to just turn back to the other piece of this. This isn't just about the funding piece. The funding is the same, but it's kind of memorializing it and making it more rote and predictable. But the other piece of this is recognizing how art has evolved and history and cultural assets and our use of them have, have become a value much more of a value than they were 20 plus years ago, or they were, than they were anticipated 20 plus years ago. And so that's the other piece of this that I believe that Jennifer would like some direction on, to hear your thoughts on the, in the final minutes that we have as she works with her department to get this ready to bring back for further discussion.
Madam Mayor, I do think that's an important part of the conversation because obviously, I think that when this ordinance was enacted, public art was still kind of in its infancy in so many ways. And we've come such a long way because of our really professional staff and the way that our community thinks about arts, history, cultural assets in our city and the importance that people place on that. So I think that that is an important piece and I appreciate your comments too about kind of professionalizing the budget. It just creates a little bit more predictability for your department. Like, yes, we value cultural and art assets in the city. We also value their maintenance and their operations and we value taking care of them. And so we're not going to just build new stuff without having some dedication to the ongoing maintenance of that. And so I think that that, the partnership of that 1% plus the 2% really makes a lot of sense to me, because it brings those two together. And of course, if we have a year when there's a major asset that needs an overhaul, that may be something additional. But it feels like this 0.2% is really kind of a baseline commitment to taking care of those assets long term. So I really appreciate all the work that you've done in your few short months here to look at this a little bit more comprehensively so that we can avoid examples that we've had in the past of art, you know, beautiful art assets that were not cared for properly and that we didn't really have the funding to make sure that they were preserved for longevity. And so hopefully we can avoid some of that in the future. So thank you and thank you to Arts and History staff for all your work too.
Madam Mayor, thank you. On the, I don't know what the word for it is, the programming, that the way that art has changed and this is one of these, and I'm going to show my ignorance because it's not my area, but you could see on your slide the history of the, or it started as an office of the historian and the historian traditionally collects things and documents and retains history, it's stuff, right? And then it expands into art and the art focus initially is still kind of stuff. And now we're talking about performance art or light shows, things that are consumed but not kept. And I don't know the answer to that, but it feels different, particularly from a funding mechanism that's tied to capital improvement. And I don't know that it's not the right course, but it feels thematically very different to me. It feels like money is being used for art, which is good and correct, but it's being consumed by people in this little brief clip of time. And that is the nature of that art and I get it and I'm not, you know, not ranking things in any way, but it feels really different. And I would like to be educated more on it because I, I don't, it makes me uncomfortable in some way.
Madam Mayor, I just, I'll just respond to that briefly, Councilmember, agent. So one thing that we have considered, because I think you're exactly right, it's sort of a fleeting, temporary artist fleeting, right? What's nice is we have an archive and we also have websites now and the internet, right? So we can actually and plan to preserve those things in our archives. So for instance, if we do a projection art piece or event, that's the kind of thing we can preserve through digital recordings and keep in our archives. And then we are also putting, one of our, another, other initiatives is to put all of our public art online so that it's accessible digitally to everybody. And so that sort of thing would go on there as well. So it does become a permanent asset of the city, even though it's different than the painting behind you or the sculpture that you might see out at, you know, wherever you might go. It does become a permanent asset, but in a different kind of way.
Yeah, I mean, we don't like, we don't want to accidentally create an art regime that only preserves harpsichord music. Because that's not, like, the piano came along and now we do it completely differently. And I'm very open to that, but it just, I'm looking forward to learning more about this.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you for, for reminding us to also comment on the cultural asset piece. To me, this is a really important piece of addition to the ordinance. Maybe in response to Councilmember Bajin's comments, I guess to me, my, one, one of the things I was wondering is it time to actually rename the ordinance? Not just percent for the art, but percent for arts and culture or percent for arts and history or something so that we recognize, and I guess the way I look at this, if we preserve those cultural assets, the archives of our history of our city, the history of the culture of our city, the history of the art of our city and make it accessible to current and future residents and researchers. We immediately enrich the opportunity to make sure that, that the purpose of those assets, the meaning of those assets gets carried forward in the history of our city. And so I do think it's really important to, whether it's through this ordinance or something else, figure out a way to fully support the ability to create these archives and make them researchable.
Thank you.
All right, I think that that's it, you've got some stuff to work on.
Great.
And we'll continue the conversation. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much for your time.
We'll be back at six.